I guess we're ready.
Would you stand with me, please? Before we start the show tonight, I've been asked to remind you, if you're at one of these little mics, be sure to get up close to it because people just can't hear us if we sit back away from them. So if you just try to remember that.
Some of us say things that should not be heard.
You can lean back. I know she leaned back an awful lot.
I wondered why I said something turned red.
By the way, Dr. Charlie, did you have any trouble getting here tonight? I'm afraid without your chauffeur, you might not make it.
It was tough, but I figured it out.
All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I'm gonna ask Paula, if she will, to leave her for her tonight.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability to be up here tonight. Thank you for each one of the directors and administration staff and all the other staff that take care of this college or help us make the right decisions and be better among the students. Help us on our drive home. Know that our drive is a distance. Everyone be safe. Yes, these things not made. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Paula. Anybody see public comments? All right. We'll move right into our business for the evening. I need a motion to open the public hearing on the proposed tax rates of point of 0.136050 for the regular tax district and for 0.05 for the Palestine Branch Campus Maintenance Tax District as the tax rates to support the physical year 2021 and 2022 budget. So that I hear a motion, we go into... So Ron Day makes a motion that we're going to have special tax public hearing. David Mox seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. The public hearing is now open for anyone that is in the room that has anything you'd like to say about the tax rate, the proposed tax rate. Hearing none. I need a motion then for us to close the public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Jerry Stone makes that motion. Steve seconded that motion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, now I need... I've gotta have two separate motions. I've gotta have a motion for the regular tax district of 0.13605 up to 0. And so that I hear a motion that we approve that proposed rate.
They have to read the most. It's on their desk.
Yeah, okay.
I make a motion that we move the property tax rate to be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.13605, which is effectively an 8.1% increase in tax rate.
Thanks, Dr. Charlie. I hear second. Jerry Stone, seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. I need a motion for the Palestine Branch Campus District. I hear a motion, we...
A motion for the property tax rate to be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 0.05000, which is effectively a 4.21% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Terry seconded the motion. Uh, Paula... Okay. Paula seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. That concludes our public... Proposed public hearing on proposed tax rates for the year 2021 and 22. All right. We'll move on to item number four.
We're already on six.
Uh, number six. Okay. All right. On item number six, consider, discuss, and approve the college's physical years 21 and 22 budgets.
And we're gonna turn that over to Mr. Hopkins.
Board, I wanted to mention a few things. Laura, if you'll scroll down to the spreadsheets. You've got some tax information there that I'll let you all read. These are required by state law. It's a cover sheet. What I wanted to point out, we've been over and over the budget, but there's a couple of things that changed since the August 11th. I want to be sure that I pointed those out to the board. Salary and benefits, because of the changes, people coming and going. We have lowered those numbers $26,301 lower than what you saw on August 11th. You always know. On the maintenance and operations, I'm gonna list the items that have been changed. The Eastboards was changed, $61,971 is the increase. It was, for whatever reason, left out in budget, $60,000 of that is student scholarship. It was not keyed into the budget module as it should be. The insurance has been increased, $3,926. Again, I had an estimate. Brenda's here tonight to talk about, we have real numbers. It was only all $3,900. The CRM was added to the budget for $47,500. You know, Philip may wanna talk about that minutes since it's something we've been working on a while.
Sure. Thank you for listening. It's something that they've been working on since before I got here. And we have really had no progress on this at all. We've found things that were in the $75,000, $95,000 range that didn't do half of what we needed to do. And so we didn't budget for that because we were not sure exactly how much we'd be budgeting for. And just as we hit the end of this budget cycle, we found one that was probably about as good a deal as we're going to get as far as the cost of the module and as far as what it will do for us. You will actually follow a student from the first time we have contact with that student through the alumni period. They'll stay in touch with students through the alumni. And we hope to be able to build that foundation funding as well. So it came up right at the very end. So we did put it into the budget and it was $47,500.
We also had a decrease. Jimmy had been looking at the redistricting costs. We lowered what we're requesting for redistricting for about $25,000. And we had a video board go out. Was that... That we were trying to repair. They're telling us now it's unreparable. So we've added $25,000 to replace that video board. These changes that I've mentioned netted into the budget is an increase of $86,296. That leaves our contingency at $2,467,176. And I believe the one that y'all have is 2.5. Those are the only changes that have been made. I wanted to bring those out to the board because y'all had not seen those. If there was anything else, I don't think there's anything else we could talk about. Go through the salary structure and all that kind of good stuff, so... A good time was had by all.
It was just...
That's all I've got.
It was just too short a show. All right. Does anyone have anything you'd like to say about the physical budget for 2022 before we take a vote on it? If not, I hear a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Night makes that motion. David seconded the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the hard work, time, effort, good time that we had putting this together. We appreciate it.
On item number seven, consider and discuss the effects of the Terrell Health Science Center interior and exterior renovation.
We have Randall here tonight. Randall, we talked about this at our last board meeting and some of the issues that we were having there when Randall was here. I think we've come up with some ideas about what needs to happen for us to be able to repair and renovate what needs to be done. And hopefully you've had an opportunity to read through the memo that we sent out. Randall's gonna explain some of that to us.
Good evening. Great to be with you. So we have... Oh, we have a contractor on boards at the parking lot. Unfortunately, he's a general contractor. It's kind of the third leg of the stool that we really needed to be able to evaluate what the issue really was. I think we've determined pretty much, at least in my mind, what's causing the heating issue. So it appears that when the contractor built the facility, the drainage contours that we had shown weren't quite flawless. And as a result, there's a moat that's being dammed up around that wing of the building that has a very poor foundation. It's actually the landscape metal edging that's damming the water up about 18 inches away from the foundation. And we kind of really needed the contractor to help us determine that. And that's between David and myself and contract integrity that really kind of helped us to get to the bottom of that. So it looks like what we really need to do is probably regrade that area to the west or the northwest wing to south of the multipurpose classroom. Take the landscaping outside, regrade it. Get that water away from the foundation. Make sure that it can't get next to the foundation. Put some extensions on the downspouts to make sure that the water coming off the roof gets away from the foundation. And I think that will probably solve the issue. It doesn't mean that that portion of the building won't move, but I think that it will considerably reduce the amount of movement that we'll see there. And it may stop again. There's no way to really tell until we make these improvements and see if it works. In the meantime, we've made some recommendations on changes to the interior. They're also cosmetic and to remove the tripping hazard that's happened where we've seen differential movement, which is about an inch or quarter. And I think once we make these changes to the outside, that's going to... Hopefully that'll stop the movement. As I mentioned previously, generally the KEO technical engineer in the phase when we were first working on the project, that there's an underground stream underneath that portion of the building. There's really nothing that anybody can do about that. It is what it is. The foundation is not a very good foundation. It was built 60 years ago, 50 years ago. There's really not much you can do about that foundation. At this point, it's heaving. Sinking will not really do something about it. That's what we're studying. I think the improvements that we're contemplating will help on the outside. The other improvements we're proposing are just cosmetic really on the inside. And hopefully will mitigate any future movement in there as well. But having a contractor on board really helped. He and I, David, were able to really walk other parts of the building, see some other suspect areas that could be of problems of similar consequences in the future. We've derived fairly inexpensive corrective work for that at this point. So the number that's being estimated right now, we're showing 159,500 actually. I think I played Jerry to the wrong number because we had requested $15,000 for our fees instead of 10. So it would be 164,500 instead of 159,500. All of us, Jerry, I think I stirred you the wrong number. And that's not all of the funding that's available left in the budget. My recommendation is use and leave that money there available for us to make additional improvements to the building if needed. I think we ought to make this first wave of improvements and see if that fixes the issue. If it doesn't, then we'll have to run out and see what else we think needs to be done. I think it'll fix the jury. That's my recommendation. Any questions?
Given the tax law, the time we took from the beginning, we have some sense of knowledge about the fundamental flaws that we discussed with that foundation before undertaking this many million dollar project. On the engineering and review and planning, how did we wind up with... How did we find ourselves here? That's not looking at finger points. It's looking to understand. How did we find ourselves in this place?
That's a fair question. The way we found ourselves in this place is that the building... The building foundation is here, let's say. And our drawings called for the dirt work outside of that landscaping to be down here and sloped away from the building.
Makes sense.
What actually, in fact, got built is the dirt work, including the landscaping, got out here a little ways away from the building, about 18 inches away from the building, got built up higher than what was shown in the drawings. So what's happening is that dirt out here, which is being detained by a metal edging landscaping with river rock next to the building on dirt that's lower than the dirt in the landscaping is creating a moat that's being dammed up of metal edging landscaping. So in reality, I think it just wasn't put in the way that we had shown or expected it to be put in. So that's the simplest way.
So is that to say that our contractor did not construct what you put before?
Or less.
So the next question there would be, why would they not be correcting that deficiency? Leaving aside the additional damage for someone else to figure out to the building that we now have to pay for, why would they not at a minimum correct from the site that they made and not follow in your design?
Well, that's a fair question, too. I guess, in my mind, that contractor's department, so they're not around anymore. They're out of business. Whether there's anybody to actually pursue to get the work done, they were a year late finishing the work. And then do, you know, that not right. I don't know if that's really... People aren't repairing it. Sometimes, in my opinion, it's just best to move on. I've had other situations like this happen over, you know, thirty something years out of business. My way of thinking, it's just not worth it. You just don't get satisfactory results. I guess you've got a surety bond company, and that's who you've got, too, but that's never provided satisfactory results for my standpoint on any project that we've ever done. So you spend money on legal fees. You spend money on power fees. Honestly, it can be as cheap or cheaper as to have this contractor fix it. Have everybody do that. Just my...
Well, certainly it has to be fixed. And I agree with you on that. But that does seem like a lot of money to just leave it on the table that we should not provide. They're not at the house if they're following the plan.
You're starting to be out of legal fees.
We should examine that. We have obligations.
You're starting to be out of legal fees. Legal fees and our fees.
Pay attention if you're making money.
That would be the college's decision. I've just been through that before. I haven't been personally. And also, I think between the legal fees and the fees that we'll spend on the strike, that's not even as much as you're gonna pay for some problem.
I guess the question I have is do they need to put on notice when identified it's a problem? And my big concern with putting them on surety bond and everybody have noticed is what's next? Are we gonna find something out? And I don't know the answer to that. I don't want us to slow the work down badly, but it just feels like they should be given the opportunity to respond.
If you can find somebody that...
I understand that.
Contractors out business.
So the surety bond, if we don't notify and we don't take that action, you know, I think if we start, I think we could be out of luck. And I have no expertise in that. I think that it's something that's a legal matter we may need to discuss in closed session at some point where we can have our legal counsel here. But I'm all for fixing it. I just, even if we don't feel it's worth pursuing, I feel like we owe it to no... No urgency. I understand what you're talking about and I don't question it at all. I'm just trying to make sure with our eyes and front of our teeth.
So it hurts the branch and their attention? I mean, if they make a mistake and it's obvious, would it just hurt them? I mean, I understand what you're saying and I end up in the same philosophy, but on the other hand, taxpayer's money. And if you just, before we do anything, we need to say, hey, guys, we noticed you did this. It's gonna cost extra. Fix it. What's your thoughts? They may jump on the board and sit and play the whole thing. May not. But on the other hand, you don't know. They try. So I mean, I mean, it's not to say whether they do the effort.
Things do pretty murky and they get hard for...
I understand. Something like that, something like that is real. Oh.
And, you know, the contractor were a viable entity. So they have to ask them to fix it if you want them to. They're not around. My experience with surety companies is they... It's hard to...
So the contractor, the contractor is out of business?
Yes. She is. Yeah. They went out business before the project finished, actually. One of the people that worked with him, the Tim brothers, if you remember him, he finished the project with, you know, what funds they had left in the project that they closed the building, they closed the contractor company before the project, the Health Science Center, finished. Which was part of the reason it took an extra year to get it finished.
So maybe I guess we've got two separate questions. One is, do we approve these expenses? And then two, we've got to make a separate decision whether we should pursue any other course of action. And I don't think...
Let me ask Randall how explicit you think the circumstances are. In other words, what is the urgency here?
I think the urgency on repairs needs to move. So I think the longer that moat sits around that foundation that it's not a very good foundation to begin with.
I get that. But why don't we consider, and I don't like the notion of not having dialogue or reasonable exchange to seek a resolution on their die. But given circumstances that we've seen that that might not be in our best interest. So perhaps we consider, go ahead and do it and then pursue the surety of the contractor where, you know, by building something big. Our surety bond, we know that. And it seems pretty black and white. I mean, it's either here or it's up here. There wasn't a limit to it. But I wouldn't want to risk, you know, further deterioration in your situation and seeing the cost more than something much larger. I think I would tend to advocate what's made the decision, although I don't think it's as good as having the dialogue, having them fail or whatever. But given that, I think we can support a decision if we make that one. Go ahead, get it done for your recommendation now and then go back and say... But put them on notice. I mean, we can get Lee Porter to do that quickly and the surety company. And that's basically what it's gonna be. We just need to reimburse us. Is there any work difference that has to be done on the parking lot range to some of the things, moving that water away? You know, the couple...
No, it hasn't.
I didn't know where the water was going when they were doing that.
The west. To the parking lot.
Basically. That point.
Yeah. They're plugged to the west away from the original building.
Okay. I just... I'll make a motion to improve the repairs.
Proceed with the...
Separate events needs to be done.
Okay. Dr. Charlie makes that motion. I hear second. Ron Day seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion that we refer the matter to legal counsel and ask for an early indication of, you know, pending, et cetera, and determine what avenues that we might have. This may just be the first move. You know, we hope not, but these things have a way.
Randall, how much... What's the time you think we're looking at?
Probably 69 days once we turn the contractor loose. It's really kind of... It's really kind of one of those projects needs to be done on a time and material basis, honestly. It's, I mean, they've given us a number, but it's just what I'm saying. You just have to kind of feel your way through. It's not like one of those things that you can take it out and have, you know, put it out and put it in. It's just that one of those stuff.
So, Randall, is there any third party documentation that should be done before we start in case we have to go forward?
It wouldn't hurt to get a survey done of that area just in actual grades.
I mean, it just seems to me you need to do that math and documentation right now. It shouldn't take long.
Yeah, we asked the contractor to give them a number that he was going to scale.
Yeah.
Kind of documentation.
But, you know, it should...
That's a good one.
Document.
Right.
Hey, this is the height. This is what the plan's going for. It's not there. What's happening is, you know, at least get that documented and we can send it with our request.
Yeah, I would say that the grades on that side of the building were really tight. It was tough to make the grades work just not enough fall on that west side of that building and where the existing parking lot was.[1748.48]
And where the existing parking lot was, we had existing grades in the building, we had existing grades at the parking lot. And only so much slope to work with. So it's tricky. It was tight.
I think we have to remind ourselves, I think the discussion that we had one day was, the building we had originally designed in another location, cost was about fourteen to fifteen million dollars from over the moment it happened here.
It was ten million dollars for construction.
Since we just don't.
You got the same amount of construction that you got.
Yeah.
A sixty thousand or a building this way, I think it was about thirty thousand.
We're going, we're going to spend a little bit of that money off. And, and, you know. That was the price today to save ten million dollars.
Yeah, that's good.
And I think we just need to keep that in our mind and understand that. We're going to finish with patch money. We probably need the budget with patch money. On an annual basis, things like that.
Well, I think, as I said last time, if, if you buy a pre-owned home or a pre-owned car, there's only so much that you can know about it until you get it. And at some point, you learn about the skeletons that were there once you have it and you're living in it. You know, the building is just, it's kind of requires some maintenance up in years. It's not a new build. And it's some of the foundational issues that we need to address.
You got a motion on the floor.
Motion to seek legal counsel.
Oh, okay, that's what David, David made the motion, okay.
What do you say?
Mike seconded that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Bokey carries.
All right. While you're up there, on a positive note, you want to say something about the parking lot?
Uh, the parking lot's moving on quickly. You know, we had some rain in August, which New York gets kind of insulated a little bit, but, you know, this contractor seems to be able to get things moving and we have another meeting tomorrow to find out the status. And we'll swing along. The next sixty days will be done. Thank you, Senator.
Okay, thank you, Randall.
All right, Randall, you're going to keep us informed now as it progresses on this. On, on, on what's going on?
On, on the differential movement issues.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Randall. All right.
We're moved to the presidential board.
I'll be, I'll try to be real, very quick here. Fall semester update, we're cautiously optimistic about the fall semester, but it's really too early to tell. A whole lot, we've, we've still got students that are registering and changing classes and, and, and dropping and that sort of thing. Dropping, not paying for the classes. So I'll give you a full report on the enrollment as soon as I feel comfortable that we've got a, a better picture of that. Probably, you know, another week or two. And then I'll give you at the September board meeting, a full report of everything and where we are with that. The COVID-19 update, you know, we're dealing with it just like everybody else is dealing with it. We are, again, we, we put out a protocol. Everybody's aware of that. We sent emails, we put it on social media about our protocols. We're trying to do things with, with the requesting, we're, we're asking people to wear masks. We're not requiring it, of course, but we're asking it, or vaccinations, we're asking it, we're not requiring it. Asking for self-monitoring and symptoms and protocols as to what to do with that. We've had a few students that have tested positive. Last week, we had about four or five last week. We've had a couple probably that came through today. We canceled a volleyball game last week, two volleyball games last week. We canceled a soccer game on Saturday and another soccer game this week. And we canceled the scrimmage last Saturday because of COVID issues. Either we had or the other team had. Our region fourteen, there's fourteen teams and fourteen colleges in our region fourteen conference. And we have a system to where any, if any player on any team tests positive for, for COVID, then it's, it's posted out there where everybody's aware of it. I'm not seeing all that much like, like I thought I probably would yet. I'm seeing some, but not that much. But it's going to be a week to week, day to day basis. In terms of what we do and where we go and how we do that. So we'll just kind of play that by ear and do what we need to do to make sure that we have safety. We're trying to get vaccinations, I mentioned that earlier. I think Doug Curran is helping us to get vaccinations back on this campus again. We're trying to do it to where we can get those, especially those three hundred and twenty-five students that we have living in dorms. Opportunity to get vaccinated, we can't require it again, but we can, you know, have it available and, and do what we can to encourage it. If they, if they chose to do that. We've also purchased a several hundred, they're not called quick test, they're called. Rapid test, rapid test. So that if we have students on campus, any of the campuses, that our faculty or staff that feel like they have symptoms, we can give them the rapid test. I believe you can take it within fifteen minutes. It's a, you can find out if you've got positive or not. We feel like that's important, especially those three hundred and twenty-five students that we have living in the building. We, we have our classes now scheduled in both remote format and face-to-face format. If we have students that signed up for a face-to-face class and for some reason they test positive for COVID and have to stay home for two weeks or ten days or whatever the case may be, they can still take that class in a remote format. They'll have to, you know, be there, it'll be at, at a scheduled time, but they'll have the opportunity, opportunity to do that. We set up all of our classes, I think I mentioned that to you before, where our students could do that if necessary. We're having a lot of students that are wanting to change from face-to-face to remote because of COVID. You know, we're seeing a lot of people that want to do that, students that want to do that. Our faculty and staff are ready. If we have to go back and close it down like we did March twentieth of two thousand and twenty, we're prepared to do that. We hope that we don't, we actually pray that we don't have to do that. But if it comes to it and, and we can do that pretty quickly and probably a matter of a week or, or, or less to be able to make that change over. And, and so we're, we're, we're prepared for whatever happens. And we're going to be moving forward on, like I say, on a day-to-day basis. We've got a committee that meets and Dr. Reed's kind of the chairman of our committee. She's, she kind of led us through all this last year and led us through it in a positive way. So we're trying to do whatever we can to maintain, whatever we can for safety of our faculty and staff and our students. Anybody have any questions about COVID?
I need to make a comment.
Yes.
So doing testing on campus, I think, despite. I think the question you've got to make a decision on is what does a negative test mean? If that test is negative and it's inaccurate, then we have liability. We've left them on the campus with our people with a test that is inaccurate. Our standard treatment in, in our office is when someone presents, we do the screening test, EOC T. If it is negative, we swap them to swap, the next swap goes to the PCR test.
Okay.
Which is more accurate. If someone is symptomatic and has been symptomatic for seventy-two hours, the probability of their point of care test being positive is very high. If they're very early in the illness, probability of it being positive goes down. And so I think there needs to be some thought about around, what do you do with your negatives? Because it doesn't mean they don't have COVID. It means they had a negative point of care test. So we need to look around those guidelines. At the minimum, they should be retested three to five days later.
Okay.
That'd be a minimum.
Okay.
Preferably they have a PCR test. That, you know, we wouldn't have to, we could obtain a sample and have a contract with somebody doing it if we wanted to. Or we could require them to deliver one to us.
Okay.
And then a certain amount of that. And I think there just needs to be some thought around that.
Okay.
Because this point of care testing is, it's pretty slick, it's pretty good. But if you're early in the illness, there are much higher chances to get a false negative. So.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to anything you're doing.
Okay.
Probably be screwed over.
Okay. We did contract last year with one of our medical physicians here in Athens and that may be something that we need to look at again in terms of.
You can take those swaps at the same time and hold the PCR. If the person's negative, then you send the PCR.
Okay.
Most of those are coming now overnight, you know, you get them the next day.
Okay.
And if that one's negative, you know, you're ninety-nine percent sure if you got a good sample. So.
That's, we appreciate that advice. We're, we're trying to do the best that we can with a limited knowledge that we have.
I understand, I just think we have to understand what, what a negative point of care test means. It just means it was negative.
Okay. My wife took it last Friday and she was negative. But she still got the symptoms. She took it again yesterday and she was negative. And she went to the physician, her doctor today and she was negative again. And it's.
There's a lot of.
I hope she's negative, don't you? Yeah.
I just think we need to work on the problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you for saying that. We, we certainly can do that.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other comments about the, anything regarding COVID? There were some other things, the budget committee back a couple of months ago asked for some additional information in regards to the college and what we're doing here and how we're doing it. And so I had provided you that with this documentation. This is a Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, it's just documents from them. And I printed them out, put them in, in this for you. What I'd like for you to do is look over this. We, we look at this all the time. So, but you, you may not have ever had the opportunity to look at some of this information. So take it with you. If you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to go through it. And I may not even be able to answer all the questions, but if I can't, we'll find somebody that does. So this is for you as well. I also provided you an update regarding some of the achievements that I think that we felt like we had this last year, and I think you have that in front of you as well. As well as some of the projects that we have, that I have going forward in the next year. And I might just mention a couple, I'd like, I'd really like for you to look over those. Those would be the, the goals and initiatives. This would, this would be the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two goals and initiatives. I think you have this. And if you, if, if there's not something on here that you would like for us to be doing at TBCC, please let me know. Because, I mean, again, this is, I, I get some of this from you, but I get some of this from things that I know that we need to do. Very quickly, renovate Northwest Hall, that's something we talked about. Implement an SEM management program, that's something that Dr. Parnell's been talking about for several months since he's been here. Implement TDCG remote insert, remote in-service program. I did receive our MOU from them, signed by them and by us earlier, like last week. So that's moving forward, that looks really good. But we'll be working on it all year this year. Feasibility study and develop financial pro forma for a workforce facility in Kaufman. That's something I want you to be familiar with, at least that's something that we're going to be talking about in this coming year. And you can read through that and we can talk about it later, and we will talk about it later on. Kaufman Educational Center, you know, we're doing some things with that facility now. And we're going to be doing some more things in the near future with that, where the old health science center was located in Kaufman. Pathways initiatives is something we've been talking about also, that it's really related to SEM. But we'll be, we'll be dealing with that this year. We're going to finalize the sale of the Kilman property. I hope, Steve, Grant, I hope that's going to happen sometime in the, in the, in the coming year. It looks like it's probably getting closer and closer, we're in the final phase of that. Another thing we'd like to do this year is develop a dashboard that has more current information. As you look in this document, you'll see this is usually a year-old information. It's information from two thousand and twenty. And so what we'd like to be able to do now that we have Colleague and that we, we, we've implemented Colleague, we'd like to be able to use Colleague to be able to provide a dashboard that we could prevent to the board, present to the board and anybody else on a monthly basis so that you can see up-to-date information as to what we're doing and how we're doing it and what we're achieving. That's something that we've got on, something we talked about with our budget committee as well. We'd like to develop a facilities master plan. As we mentioned again, our buildings are getting older and older and, and we're going to need to be something in the, doing something in the next five to ten years or earlier, possibly. Finalize and submit SACCLC five-year report. Those are the things that I have on my list, the things that I know that we need to do this year that we're going to move forward with. And I'll be talking to you on, on a monthly basis in terms of the different things on this list. If there's something that's not on this list that you would like for us to be doing at TBCC this next year, then you can let us, let me know and we'll do whatever we need to do to move forward with that. That pretty well, the, the next meeting that we have will be September the twenty-seventh. And that pretty well, unless anybody has any questions for me, that pretty well takes care of the presidents before.
All right, anyone else? No question about Dr. Carey. We'll hit it for. All right, out of number nine, consider the minutes of July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one and the July of the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one record board meetings. And August eleventh, twenty twenty-one special meeting. Those have been presented to you, I hear a motion that's, or if anyone have any corrections or comments about them. If not, I hear a motion to approve them. Jared Matt sets that motion. And then Steve seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Bokey carries. Out of number ten, consider the business signs on investment reports June twenty twenty-one.
Okay, David.
I'll get them all, then pull it up. We're still tracking pretty much, as we talked about before in June, about eleven percent down, still on tuition fees. That's twelve million dollars is what we're projecting. I looked at August today and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. It dropped a little below twelve million, probably for things that got reversed, students dropping, so on and so forth. And the rest of that revenue is, is pretty much tracking just like it has been throughout COVID this year. That the bottom eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar difference, that's, that was the Kilman property donated last year, which it'll give us this year. Most of your expenditures, again, are, are tracking under budget. On the second page. I wanted to point out to, to find where everybody was still looking at the eight point eight billion. And I want to talk about HIRF here in a minute. When I looked at August today, as before we stood, revenue versus expenditures was six point six million. And that, that's pretty, that's the latest number I had. Well, there'll be a lot of things that come in that'll still be in August. But when you take that six point six million and you add two million dollars that I've drawn down for fall and spring loss revenue, which we'll get to, this number at the bottom still is tracking pretty close. So I feel pretty good about that. And you'll see here in a minute, we've got sixteen million in reserve. We're still looking at, you know, putting, putting somewhere pretty close, even if you take the bus purchase out. Probably close, still looking at eight million dollars. So that's, that's very positive note. And it's still tracking even this latest day, looking at long. Let's go to the next page. And go to the second. Keep going, yeah, there you go. Cash investments, a total of twenty-eight million. I'll point your attention again to capital reserve sixteen point four. Parking lot really hasn't ramped up that much yet as far as expenditures, but you'll see some more of those costs come out. Not much going on in bond funds, obviously. Next page is your monthly investment report. Elder, we took full time to split some of the money up into CDs, making those massive amounts of money. Can you see the sixteen point four million in capital reserve? Next page. And we did, this month, we got a whopping seven hundred and forty-eight dollars coming out. This, you see your monthly transfer and your interest income going in. There's not a lot of activity here this month, particular month. And the last one before I get to HIRF is the over twenty-five thousand. See if anybody had any questions. I think they're on there. We've got some furniture expenditures, some software, things of that nature. Exclusives access, which is the new textbooks. Anybody have any questions?
Do you want to, do you want to raise your debate side of Northwest Hall regarding the game? Have we got bid on or anything?
Now, we're, we're, we're finishing up what we were supposed to do this year. He's probably seen, may have seen some of the painting that's been done. But we're getting ready to get, start getting some bits together for renovation. And we want your help when we do that.
Include new furniture?
Oh, we want, we hope, but it will include new furniture, it will include new lighting, it will include new floors. And then hopefully we can. And then hopefully we can do something with the ventilation system, possibly. We'll have to be evaluating that. And then we'll be already repainted, so we'll be in pretty good shape. There's some plumbing work that needs to be done as well. But we hope to take it and make it look brand new like we have the Health Science Facility in Terrell. Well, we have to have it completed by July of this next, of 2022. So we hope to start on it early. And David, we've been talking about it. We want to get it done early. But it probably won't be done by the spring semester, beginning of the spring semester. We probably won't need it. We don't need it now, as long as COVID's still around. Eventually, we will. I think we're going to be, we're going to have an increase in the number of dorm students in the next year or two, especially with the soccer teams and the other teams that we've got coming on board, international students and et cetera. But right now, it's just not there because of COVID. Yeah, the stairs are in there too, yeah. Thank you. What I'd like to be able to do, just to kind of follow up, is have a board committee. And that board committee could help us make some decisions and work forward with some of the things that we do in Northwest Hall. That would be good to be able to have some help and some good advice. We can talk about that.
Well, I see we might have a lot of volunteers.
Well, if we had any volunteers, that'd be great. But yeah, I think that would be good, absolutely. Help us through the process.
We'll do that next month.
That'd be good, or before. Yeah, next month or before.
Okay. Do we have anyone that would really like to serve on the maintenance of our facilities?
It's the renovation of Northwest Hall. Okay.
Mike Wood, Dr. Carey will.
We really need Steve Grant. I keep looking at him, but we really need him because his background is in housing and his background is working in things like this. He's been busy with Kilman property, believe me. We're going to get that one done, and then you can move over and help us with the Northwest Hall. Steph's like a good committee to me.
All right, I'll name this committee tonight. And you can go to work tomorrow.
Okay. Anybody else want to help out here? Okay.
All right, thank you all.
So the next slide is going to be on HIRF. Just wanted to mention to you briefly, the, about the end of August, when we went in and drew down the lost revenue, you see there for the fall and the spring, along with the TDCJ salaries. This slide indicates, and some of these other expenditures you've seen every month. We're still going to have supplies. I mean, I've talked about a little bit about these tests, things of that nature. We're still going to have to buy, especially with this variant coming back. There's things that we're going to have to spend money on, which is fine, that's what the money's for. But today, we spent $4,087,000 on the items that you see there. Next slide. This is just kind of giving you some idea where we started. I think, Dr. Charlie, if somebody brought up the, up there at the top, you can see the total that we were awarded in HIRF 1, 2, and 3, 9.6 million. This kind of takes you through these latest draws. And down there at the bottom, you see what we've got left, 5.5 billion. And that's made of about $721,000 of HIRF 2 and all of HIRF 3. The next slide is looking forward a little bit. Can you give you some idea, that same number is at the top about what's left. You see going down, we'll scroll down that spreadsheet. So the next page, you see all these things have been drawn. What we've got left is what's going to happen this year. And I think we discussed, even in the Budget Committee, I sort of assume worst case scenario, at least we hope it's worst case scenario, that, you know, enrollment didn't go up at all. If it does go up, we won't have to use all this money. Things that we know for sure right now are the loss of contact hours. You see those split over two years. The other thing I haven't done yet, because we're just now coming to the close of the summer, I haven't drawn down any loss revenue for the summer, which I'll have to calculate in a couple of weeks once everything gets finalized. And I find it was important for you all to see this. We wanted to talk about it at every meeting. And y'all try to, and this information is as of, I think, 8/27, it's looking at a trade. We pulled money down, so try to keep you as up to date as we can on this. If there's any questions. I mean, I told you before, the game the CFOs are playing is you can use this over two years. It's kind of a guessing game about when are you going to need it. And David, we talked about the extension, but like most guidance. Yeah, that's what they said. We're still trying to figure out exactly what does that mean? So, but we got until May to figure that out. So, and we will. No, what they did is, as they rolled these things out, they kept moving. They not only moved the target, but then they changed, HIRF 1, you couldn't use for loss revenue. Well, then when they came out with 2 and 3, they said you could. And then they said you couldn't go back till January, and then all of a sudden, you can go back to last March. So it's all in one pot of money, even in G5 when we draw it down. And it all has the same characteristics now.
But we satisfied the need for the students first off.
Well, they split those, if you're talking about the student portion. This is only the institution. Yeah. And I've got something I can talk to you all about, but yeah, we're not prohibited from using this, but, you know, with the way the revenue was looking and everything, we kind of set that aside. And when we get to the end, we'll have all kinds of options, but there's, you know, talking about Northwest Door, we could use it for air filtration. You know, if we chose, if we had, looked like we were going to have money left, or we could change gears, get off the loss revenue and go towards something else. And we need to.
I mean, I can look at capital expense and loss revenue and student.
Well, they're very specific on those. You know, you can't buy real estate, but air filtration, things that prevent COVID, you know, you couldn't go out and build a gym. That won't cut it. And they're very specific things that won't let you do. But air filtration was one of the things that they did mention. And let me mention last, on the, on the student side, a little while we're talking about this, the, I'm sorry, I didn't get a slide up here, but we've got 7.1 million on the student portion, which this is the portion that goes straight to the students. We've awarded about $2 million and $99,000. We've got all, and all this is HIRF 3, a little over $5 million, $5 million and $2,000 that's left to be awarded. And Philip and his group are meeting to discuss exactly how that's going to go. And we've got a couple of meetings on, you know, this. So let's answer your question. That's, that is the other side of this. And right now, HIRF 3 is as far as they've gone.
Thank you, David.
All right. Thank you, David. Anyone have any questions with David? All right. If not, I'll ask for motions to consider to approve the.
Financial investment.
Oh, yeah. Financial and, financial and investment report. Dr. Jerry, I, Jerry Stone, Jerry Stone makes that motion. Dr. Carey seconds that motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number 11, consider and discuss the call 2021 adult and continuing education.
Boy, this is something that we do every year in August, sometimes in July. But this is, if you had a chance to look over this, hopefully, it's a student handbook for continuing education. Kelly Townsend's here tonight. She's, they do a good job with that. And we're, we're asking, we didn't change any of the fees. The fees are all the same. The tuition fees are all charted, is the same as it has been. And we, Chris Hicks does a good job with that, and Kelly Townsend. Anybody have any questions about this?
I'm just curious, in that area, are you seeing a COVID impact?
We did it first. However, what Chris and her team did was convert all of their KTM and all of their ESL and GED courses online. So in actuality, we ended up with better enrollment and more, we had better completion rates by doing it that way. So they're going to continue in the future, offering both online and face-to-face options.
They would ask for approval.
It's about the same.
All right. Any other comment, question? If not, I hear a motion to approve the adult and continuing education schedule. Paul makes that motion. Steve seconds the motion. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item number 12, consider and discuss approval of ALTO liability and property insurance coverage.
We have Brenda Thomas here with us again tonight. We see her once a year, I think, usually in July or August. I guess this year it's in August. We appreciate you coming tonight. And we are asking for, hopefully you had a chance to read the memo here. And I think David Hopkins has been working with Brenda and Luana has been working with Brenda. And so Brenda, do you have any comments that you'd like to make or?
I do.
I'm sorry, let me stop you. Steve Grant had a question. I don't want to not answer your question that you asked me the other day about cosmetology. She's going to answer that question because we couldn't do it. Go ahead, but go ahead with what you're saying.
First of all, David and David and Luana are a joy to work with. We're blessed to have you on your staff. What you have before you, I think, is a breakdown of the premium summary and the stuff that we've given you. We, and if you'll just bear with me for a bit, you know, I'd kind of give you some background on where we come from, where we are now. So early on, I guess about three or four months ago, came we met, we talked about the property values here, the college, and that some of the buildings were underinsured. And so we went through, we looked at all of the values, and David had made some suggestions on some changes we needed to make. So when I brought this to you and the quote, I quoted as is, as the values are. And then I gave you a quote to increase those values. One of the discussions that David and I had at length was that the policy form had blanket coverage, which meant if one building was underinsured, then you could basically borrow from the other values to pay the loss. About a week ago, we were notified that that condition of blanket insurance is changing. And so what that means, they're changing to what's called a margin clause. And so what that means is that whatever value we have stated on the schedule, they're going to pay up to 125% of that. So no longer do you have that big number to borrow from, now you only have 25% of the stated value. That, we were originally, we jumped in that, if you think I need to clarify, but we were originally really considered raising those values, and you should. And now we less price those values. And because of the timing on this, our agency has decided to allow you to raise those values and keep the original pricing the same. So you, we're going to take, we're going to lower our fees and, because it's the right thing to do. We didn't create this problem, but we gave you a quote and we're going to stand by it. But we must get those values up. That being said, I think we need to still relook at them. Now that we have this 125% margin clause, I think we should still relook at them.
So since they're changing the rules, they made it cheaper, right?
I made it cheaper. It's the right thing to do. There's some behind the scenes things that were, you know, will be pursued with them. But anyway, we just wanted, you've been an oil customer and we didn't see this coming. It actually, without giving a whole lot of detail, it's actually something they needed to do. They discovered a gap in the reinsurance terms and the policy language. And so if they kept it there, it would have put the whole program at risk, and you might not have that option. So it's a smart business decision that they made, but it certainly put their agents a little, I guess, by surprise.
David, do you have anything you want to add?
I would often say that, you know, why not discuss this with Dr. King? Because the way it was structured before, we didn't see any point in insuring every building for 100% because the odds of the total loss were pretty low. If you lost something in Terrell or Kaufman, you still had total coverage. So whatever that decision was, we eventually would have needed to come to talk to you all about it. You could have 80% or whatever the number was. But now that they've changed the way this works, is now you're at risk on every building if it's not up to its value. So we just found this out today, but they've been good enough to keep the prices the same. But I think with insurance, the policy is changing. I don't think we have a choice. If I understand it correctly.
I will say that this program has this year started doing some property appraisals, and they started in the North Texas area. So we have about 20 property appraisals that we have a rule of thumb about what, you know, what a, you know, different building construction, what they cost to replace it. So the numbers that David had originally given me for the increase are in line, considering that 25% extra. Now, if you just want 100% to value, they're not, but they are if you depend on that 25% extra. But I do think it makes sense to look at it again, just with, in light of this change. No questions?
Is this program specific to P or is this across all carriers? Are you taking that change from the blanket to the?
It's just, this is P, but other carriers have margin clauses and not like it.
So the industry's moving to that part. I can see why.
Yes, sir. In particular, you know, these freeze losses that happened in February were just enormous.
This is the place for what?
Yes, sir.
So what tonight we're asking to do is to renew it $353,923, which is a $33,556 increase. And in the interim, between now and next year, we'll be having an opportunity to reevaluate.
And I'm actually going to ask that they do the TBCC on the scheduled behalf of an appraisal this next year, so that we have better numbers. I will also want to note one thing. In the proposal that I gave to TBCC this year, I concluded a quote for active shooter insurance. And that is in regards, there's a lot of detail to that. But it's in regards to if you have a, not just active shooter, but if you have a violent act, you're on campus, on one of your campuses, then the insurance steps in and pays some debt benefits, pays media, help with media, comes in and pays for all your counseling, for your students. And so in line And so, in light of what's happening in our world, it might be something that y'all want to consider.
What is it already included in this product?
It's in the proposal, I don't know, David, do we?
No, I mean, I think Brenda's talking to the carrier, but we didn't get this in time, or we got this discussion before, and we got it so late, I didn't consider anything else, because we didn't have time, so. It's in the proposal, it's not in the numbers.
It's not something you've had before. So, a $1 million limit costs about $5,324.
But it's not included in this cost?
No, sir. I made a notation on that summary, that it did not include the active shooter, but I wanted you to let me know that we had that quote for you.
David, would you back up just a little bit? Up on the screen, you move the screen.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all right, so, sorry, right there, right there. That's talking about value increases, and I'm seeing if the values increased $132 million, additional cost would be $36,000 or some such, is that $132 billion, is that a good number?
Well, based on, on cost per square foot that David came up with, and this was before we knew any of this.
Right.
We had been talking about this, and, and that was the cost. Now, when the appraisers get here, is that a good number? I don't know. I mean, that's, we're using David's cost per square foot, Brenda, you ran the numbers right, based on that.
We actually have a few buildings I think we should look at that may be too high.
Yeah, I mean, what, what?
But we use an average. It's a program called Duff and, Duff and Bouts, they actually send people out to do it, I'm sure they use some, some sort of software system to do that, that they send people out to actually look at your buildings.
But, but the numbers we're using, how did we get those?
Mr. David, we talked about it, I mean, we talked about construction costs, and it, really, our conversation originally was, let's take baby steps. That's, that's when we thought we had this blanket coverage, and it was, let's, let's pump them up over a three-year period, because we knew that they were underinsured, and with the change in building costs, it just needed to be addressed, so luckily, we had already looked at it.
Well, that's, you might have said this a while ago, but using 125%, we will, how many buildings do you feel like are underwriting that?
I have to look at that, I, I don't think we have, I went through, I really don't think we have much of a problem, very, very many. Some of the smaller buildings we might, buildings at the ranch and things like that, the larger buildings, I feel like with that 25%, we're okay.
I'm not 1% sure of the question, what, Carrie remembers, over here are the cosmetology buildings by the creek, and the automobile building too, and several times, we've had water getting in the buildings, caused water damage.
Right.
So, do we have any, is there any flood insurance we're paying, or are we not insuring those, or how are those handled in terms of our coverage?
And now, you'll have to remind me, David, are they still in the flood zone? If, if they're in a flood zone, then we need to buy a separate flood insurance, that if they're not in a flood zone, it's clear flood zone, then you have coverage, flood and earthquake coverage.
So, we don't, we don't have them covered then, or is it, is it coverage, just in certain form, because we don't have flood insurance?
You do have the, the buildings covered, you just don't have coverage for rising So if it's in a flood zone, and you are concerned about that, then we should get a separate flood insurance, but.
Have we ever had flood damage to a building?
Those two.
Those two buildings.
For the cosmetology and?
And welding. We, we clean it up, and sweep it out, and start all over again. Those buildings are about 60 years old, we're gonna have to evaluate those buildings.
But certainly, let me know, wanted, you know, let me know if you want to pursue that, I'm quite certain. Any other questions?
Want to have any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve liability, ALCO liability and property tax insurance coverage proposal? Carrie makes a motion.
Second.
Dr. Charlotte, Dr. Charlotte makes, uh, second's motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you again. We will continue working together.
Thank you.
You might want to add that to this new committee.
I don't think so. We'll make a difference, we'll let David and the experts over there handle the insurance.
Oh, you mean this thing?
All right, consider and discuss personnel matters.
We have, again, you've probably seen the updates, but we have several resignations, and we have retirements, and then we have new hires, and these are just people replacing other people that we have retired and resigned. We hated to see Casey Lee, Scott Withersley, I know some of y'all in the budget committee worked with Scott, we hated to see that, but he got a better job at Kewburg College for more money, and a higher position, so.
Brian.
He just retired, Brian Spurrier just retired, tomorrow's his last day, and he'd been with us for over 20 years, so he was ready to retire.
Twenty-nine years.
Really? Doesn't seem like it's been that long. We just need approval.
All right, I hear approval of personnel matters. Steve makes that motion. Jerry Stone seconded motion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries. All right, before we go into item number 14, I just had a news break here, says that a couple of things are gonna happen in Kaufman Friday, Friday evening, and one of them will be, the ballpark in Kaufman, football field in Kaufman has been the Lions Field for all these years, and Friday night, at the ballgame, the Lions Field name will be changed to Homer, Norville, football field.
Right.
And then the second thing that will happen Friday night, Kaufman will beat Crandall.
Really thinks so.
You think so, Dr. Perry?
We're gonna leave it on tape.
Leave it on the field.
All right, then, I hear a motion, we're going to executive session. Jerry makes that motion. Uh, Dr. Charlie seconded that motion. Any further, and we gotta go into executive session in accordance with government, government code 551.074, and president evaluation. So, all in favor, say aye, and all opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
I think her, her driver's right over here, so she's. Is the bus still out there?
Yes.
Y'all, after we leave here, after you go into your car tonight, the new bus is out there for you to look at. I know you're anxious to see those new buses.
Let's hope we get to use them, so.
All right, Paul is back, you gonna make the motion, Jerry?
The president, the board approves to extend the president's contract for 2021 through 2022, for a total compensation of $242,000.
All right, Jerry makes that motion, I hear second. Dr. Perry seconded the motion. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion carries.
I'm gonna take my motion now?
Yeah.
Yeah, time. Your motion, please. Ron Day second.